Good evening and welcome to the November 7th City Council Meeting. I call the meeting to order. And we have someone very special to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Her name is Anna Dorman. Would you please come forward, Anna? She is, well, I'll let her, I won't spoil the surprise. Would everybody please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the highest peace of America, to a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where there is justice for all.
Thank you, Anna. And we have a few questions for you. Before we do anything else, can you tell us who your mom and dad are?
John and Sarah Dorman.
John Dorman, dad, and mom is in the audience, right? And there she is, she's waving, people can't, she's got the camera on ya. Okay. What school do you go to, Anna?
Westwood.
And what grade are you in?
Fifth.
And who's your teacher?
Mrs. Stever.
Okay, she's got all the right answers. Now here's the big one. What's your favorite subject?
Language arts.
Love that you love language arts. And what do you want to be when you grow up?
An archaeologist.
An archaeologist. And tell me what the study of archaeology is.
It's the study of ancient artifacts.
Okay, very good. I asked her if she had a favorite dinosaur, she said it doesn't really have to do with that.[109.22][109.22](Laughter). I was trying to think of things to say, she corrected me and I loved it. I loved it. Counselors, any questions?
I like the, do you know what your dad does here?
He's the city attorney.
She has all the answers.
He does have a sign. It's better when they don't have signs. We need to move that next time.
Any other, what do you do when you're not in school? Do you take lessons? Do you have other things that fill your time other than just school and home?
Sometimes I have horseback riding lessons with my cousin in Tulsa and on Mondays I have piano.
Piano, horseback riding, archaea, I think you, we're gonna see good things from you someday. Thank you very much. Well, no, 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 you stand right there, I have to come to you.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna take. Picture turn. Someone's jumping the gun up there. Don't want to get home. And now we have a fire department, a proclamation, a presentation honoring Ava Wells as the honorary fire marshal.
Really hard to top that. First off, I wanted to thank the mayor and the council for making the second week of October, making the second week of October Fire Prevention Week. Also, I want to thank all the schoolteachers, parents, and firefighters that went out during that week and taught fire prevention to everybody. We have a short video, you got a little sample of it just then, but we have a video we'd like to show you before we continue.
The call came in as a warning fire. So we just happened to be first in on scene and we got there, there was some smoke, kind of come out of the eaves and you could smell it and see it. And we got there, we had to force a door and there was something that was burning on the stove, it was just a small fire. So we took care of that and then after that, we were interviewing kind of some other witnesses and this little girl, her mother had said that she had smelled the smoke or seen the smoke and told her to call 911.
Well, I was walking over here and I said, "Mom, I smell smoke." And she called 911.
She just happened to attend one of the elementary schools that we were at and so she got to hear the message and then hopefully I think that led her to, and she was able to call 911 and maybe she can go there, so that was positive and that was encouraging the city.
We learned about firemen at school. They save people from fire. I stopped Sparky. He thinks these firefighters come to stop them.
A big part of our job is just interacting with the public and the more we can teach young people to be safe, then that's the main goal is right to make sure that people are safe and that they can prevent the fires from ever happening. That's huge.
You scared at all or you were brave?
Brave.
All right. Could we have Ava come up here, please? All right, Ava, we've got a special guest here for you. Do you remember Sparky? Would you like to see him? All right, let's see if we can get him out here, okay?
(Inaudible).
Ava, since you did such a great job and you prevented the department fire, we're gonna make you, first off, we're gonna make you an honorary junior fire marshal with Stillwater Fire Department, all right? And also, we've got a junior firefighter tee-shirt for you. You did a great job. You can have that too.
Can everybody cheer?
We can go out here and take some pictures, is that okay?
I have something for Ava, too. I'm so proud of you for what you did and for what you learned in school. Come right around here. Good job, Ava.
Okay, that brings us to the consent docket. Counselors, does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent docket or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, please vote. And the consent docket was approved with a vote of four to zero. That takes us to public comments. Takes us to public hearings. Item A, receive public comment regarding request for a specific use permit for property located at 105 South Main for an electronic message sign in the CG District, CC-16-137. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol.
Mike Beatty from Development Services will be providing our report.
I'm Mike Beatty. This specific use permit is for a sign located Elm Street and Main Street. It's zoned, the property is zoned, Commercial General. It's surrounded by Commercial General except on the east side of the alley, just behind it is residential. That's the reason why we have to have a specific use permit for this sign. The specific permit applies to a LED sign at the bottom, if you look, my mouse go, the lower part of the sign. The new sign is, it meets, sorry. Code requires LED sign to be less than 40% of the total size of the sign. This sign's about 10%, so it meets that requirement. Planning Commission reviewed this and approved, recommended approval of the SUP. Any questions?
Counselors? Okay, at this time, I will open the public hearing. And there's no one who wishes to speak, so I will close the public hearing and we'll ask Mr. Beatty to come back up. Stat, is there a recommendation?
All right. The alternatives we have are to approve the proposed specific use permit. You can deny it or you can continue it to a certain date, table it.
Counselors, any questions for staff or comments? Or is there a motion on the recommendation?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve CC-16-137, please vote. And 16 dash, CC-16-137 is approved with a vote of four to zero. We will, items B and C have both been postponed, so that takes us to item.
We'll need a motion to reset those.
Okay. Do we have a motion to?
You know what date she wants to postpone those to?
Is it November?
November 21st.
21st.
21st on both.
Is there a motion to post, move, postpone these until November 21st?
Do you need two different votes?
You can do it all.
Motion to postpone item B and C to November 21st.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, please vote. And items B and C are postponed until November, the November 21st meeting with a vote of four to zero. That takes us to item D, receive public comment regarding a request for a closing of a portion of the alley adjacent to properties addressed at 801 through 809 West Fourth Avenue, 406 through 416 South Ramsey Street and 411 South Washington Street, CC-16-135. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on these?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McNichol.
Mike Beatty will also be providing that report tonight. Thank you.
I'm Mike Beatty. This is an alley closing on a piece of property south of Fourth Street between Washington and Ramsey, part of the Trenton-Bach development that's going in right now. The area to be closed is the hatched area. The applicant's property is highlighted in yellow. Staff has expanded the closing to include the small portion to the west since it'd be an isolated tract. There's no alley ever built there. This is a street view looking from Ramsey to the southwest. It's already been demolished, existing homes and whatnot have already been demolished, getting ready for the new development. Staff's recommendation is to approve the request. You have any questions?
Counselors, questions? Okay, is, is there a motion on this recommendation?
No public comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry, at this time, and I have someone to speak. Kelly, I'm so sorry. I apologize. We have one public speaker. I'm gonna open the meeting for public hearing now and call Kelly Harris.
Kelly Harris, located at 923 South Lowry, here representing the owners tonight. I'm really here just to answer any questions. That's okay.
Someone better have a question.
Should we ask you a question?
Do you like this project?
Yes, it's a very good project. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion on this recommendation?
Motion to approve.
Oh, I need to close the public?
Yeah, close the public.
Need to close the public meeting. And Mike, would you please come up and tell us what the staff recommendation is? Even though you've told us.
The recommendation was to approve it. The alternatives, you can close the remainder of the alley just as we presented it, or you can close just the portion of the alley adjacent to the applicant's property, or you can not close it at all.
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation on CC-16-137, please And that is approved with a vote of four to zero. That takes us to general orders. Mr. McNichol.
Friends of Lake McMurtry Annual Report is up and Dan Lawrence, well, the executive director of Lake McMurtry Fans will be giving that report.
Let me see if I can find it on here. As you said, my name's Dan Lawrence, I'm the executive director of Lake McMurtry Friends and hello, Mayor Noble and counselors and, sorry, I still want to say Chief McNichol, Manager McNichol and Mr. Dorman, it's, it's good to be here tonight. This is our annual report, we've been asked to sort of scale it down a little bit. We like to give too many pretty pictures and talk too much, so we're gonna give you some figures to look at and if you have any questions while I'm talking and the, and the figures are up on the screen, be sure and, and go ahead and ask while we're, while we're looking at it. These will be a series of graphs that show our increases from fiscal year 2012 when we started with the project and now until fiscal year 2015-16. These are the numbers of annual passes, $65 annual passes that we sell each year. And between last year and this year, we've increased 14% on those, so I think we're doing pretty good on those. The next thing I wanted to show you was our day passes and we've come a long way on those from 2,747 for the year in 2012 to over 7,000. And I was thinking on the way over here, I didn't include tent camping passes and RV passes in that, which would actually be a day pass, so if you're interested in that, I'll get that to you, those numbers too, but that will only increase the numbers that are here, so to me, if it's all, continues to go up, it looks good to me. The next thing we're looking at is income and expenses. I have represented it on the left, the $250,000 city payment. That's included in the total income, the middle, middle one, and the column on the right shows our net income. I want to explain a little bit about that. We are a nonprofit, so we shouldn't have net income, so at the end of each quarter, what we do, we take any of the funds that are left in our account at the end of the quarter before the city payment, those are put into a capital improvements fund and we use those funds to do projects on city property that improve the property. So all of that funding goes into capital improvements and that's what we spend any of those funds on. Which brings me to the next slide. One of the things we're really proud of, ever since I got there, we've been wanting to put in an ADA, a wheelchair accessible RV site. This, just a few months ago, we got that completed. Now everyone wants to say and, stay in east side number one because it has a beautiful pad and it's really nice, but we do have an ADA accessible RV site and we want to do one on the west side too, but that'll come when we get enough funds to do that. We also added an ADA wheelchair accessible parking pad at the pavilion on the east side. But anyway, here's a list of the capital improvements that we have made in the past four years, so if y'all have any questions about those, we put back $275,000 of improvements into the city's property since, since we've been there. One of the things I wanted to briefly show you was, we're really proud of it, we have great trail system on each side of the lake. And when I first got here three years ago, I said, "I wish we could connect them." We'd have, we'd have trail rides or we'd have bike races. People would have to get out on the gravel road and go around from one side of the lake to the next. We got with NRCS and talked about any of their rules and regs on the dam and they didn't have any problem with us doing that. So we added what we call the green trail that goes from the west side to the east side or vice versa. So now if you want to, you can ride all 30 miles of the trails or you can, we actually have people, Mr. McNichol, that run them. That wouldn't be me, but we do have people that'll run all 30 miles of the trails, so they're really excited about the fact that, that it's all connected. And we want to thank the OSU's Environmental Science Graduate Program. There's a portion of the students there that got together with a couple of our board members and they cut that trail out and we've got it going and everyone's really excited about it, so. Here's a list of some of the activities we've had in the past year. New ones, one of the things we did, and we talked to Mr. McNichol about this before we did, was the waterfowl blinds. We are reopening waterfowl hunting on the north end of the lake and it's been very well accepted and we've sold 14 of our blinds this year to folks and they'll be coming and hunting ducks on the north end of the lake. It's one of the, one of the things we try to do is add user groups that can be involved with the lake, and this is another great user group, and they're beginning to take a little bit of ownership in that property up in the north end and we're hoping to get to the point where we can do some waterfowl habitat improvements and get the folks that are involved in the hunting part of it to get in there and help us do that. So we do have that. We also have sponsored a couple of events, the Oklahoma Bike Summit, we were involved with that here downtown as one of the sponsors. And the Oklahoma Clean Lakes and Watersheds Association, they have an annual meeting every year at West Watkins Center and we usually try to be a sponsor of that. So if y'all have any questions about any of those activities, of course, our big one is the McMurtry Mud Run for the kids and families and last year we had 470 parents and kids that ran through that and I fortunately got to shake nearly everyone's muddy hand as they came off of the, came off of the site, so that was, that was a fun time, we're looking forward to it again. I can't remember the date right offhand, but, and lastly, I'd have looked over and saw him, I want to introduce our new park manager that came with me tonight, he's been on the job for just a month. Dustin came to us from southwest Utah where he grew up next to Zion National Park and he worked on bike trails and hiking trails and Zion and he's, I, I think he's like a famous skateboard instructor. That's what I understand. There won't be much of that going on at McMurtry, but anyway, we're really glad to have Dustin, he's, he's gonna be a great asset. He has a lot of experience in natural resource conservation and a degree in natural resources from Utah State, so we're real fortunate. Jared, our, our old manager that y'all used to love hearing him give the presentations, he decided he needed to go to school and get a degree, so, and not work at the park anymore, so he left us, but we're fortunate to get Dustin to come and work for us. So y'all have any questions? That's all I have, short and sweet.
Welcome Dustin, first of all.
Yeah. I love the kayaks. Have you ever thought of having kayak class or?
We, that's a great idea.
I have a lot of friends who are just a little bit frightened of going out. That would, I think that would be popular.
I, one of the things that we did do, we finally, when we first started the kayaks, counselor, we, we bought the, well, we actually partnered with Oklahoma City Kayaks down in Oklahoma City. They gave us the kayaks, we would rent them and then split, split the difference on the rent. We did that for two years and finally got enough money where this past year, we bought the kayaks. So this year, we get to keep all the funds from the rentals and it's, the rentals have really gone up this year, but I will definitely keep that in consideration to have some. Do you want to come out and teach a class for us?
Well, I can teach how to sit there, but that's about all I can do, but I'd love to take a class.
Great, well, we'll, we'll sure consider that. My new park manager will take that into consideration, right?
Very similar to, to snowboarding.
Any questions?
Counselors, anything else? Thank you, you did great.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you.
So are all the photos from out there?
Yes. A lot of those are, we pull up to Instagram, people that are out there taking them, so we don't even have to take them, we just get them off everywhere.
That first picture with the kayak is.
Yes, it is, it's great.
Pat's just picturing a class out there.
I am.
Okay.
I'm ready to sign up.
I think I'm ready to sign up just because of your enthusiasm.
It's very relaxing.
Item B, Stillwater Area Sports Association. Mr. McNichol?
And Carolyn Wallsted will be providing the report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Get his off and get mine on.
Can you pull the mic down just?
(Mm). We did it there. Yeah, there it is. Thank you, from the beginning, perfect. Good evening, sorry for that. My name is Carolyn Wallsted and I'm the executive director of SASSA and SASSA stands for Stillwater Area Sports Association. And these are some of our capital improvements. If you have been around Strickland, you see two major improvements. One is the color of the concession stand in Restraum area. And then we purchased the shade structures, which were very expensive, but they have been so nice. I think aesthetically, they are so pleasing and it's a safety issue from the heat and also from balls. They were, they were expensive, they were $63,000, but we felt like it was an investment for the park because so many people see Strickland. I kind of modeled mine after Lake McMurtry, so these are some of the projects and as Lake McMurtry and Friends, we are a nonprofit also, so through our investments, we have reinvested $250,000 back in to the parks in the city of Stillwater. All of our accounting is done through Duggar and Companies, but these are a few of our majors that we have done through the last three years. And as you can see right there, that's what Strickland used to look like and this is what it looks like now. It's, as a woman, very aesthetically pleasing for me. This is some things that we've added. This was 10 minutes before our baseball games were to begin, we had a downpour and this was Strickland. Needless to say, we could not recover that night, but we were able to get the games back in. Adult softball, field number five, that's been not within SASSA's property since we've taken over, but it is back. So we have adult games on one, two, three, four, and five, and this is five now. I should have had a picture of before five because it didn't even look like a baseball field, so we're very, very happy to have it back. And we have added pickleball and it is a new craze and I, I have pickleball, yes, we have pickleballers in the armory gym almost every day from about 10 to 1:00. And it is kind of the new, the new trend for the, well, actually, I don't want to say for the older generation because there's several college kids that come in and play too. It's kind of a combination of tennis and racquetball.
Ping pong, ping pong.
Here's my income and expenses. There was one that went through earlier, so if you see some discrepancies, discrepancy on 2015, I had put the shade structures, we actually didn't pay for them until 2016, but it was part of our 2015 improvements and, so I took that expense and put it back in, so that's why our profit dropped a little bit, if you happen to notice that from the two, to the two difference. But we have lots of items that we are looking forward to improving for our 2016-17 budget. This is, the city is 300,000 and then we pay back, let's see, we, we have an income that we pay back to the city for the original equipment that we purchased from the city. So there's, our, our actual payment back is not quite 300,000. We pay almost $1,800 for every quarter of this stipend. Does that make sense? Yeah, okay. Our league participation, there are three, well, the, to the far left is our youth baseball and then our youth softball is in the orange. The gray is the youth basketball and this year, we have 40 teams, that's the most that city Stillwater has ever had and that's 160 practice, or that's 160 actual game slots. So that's my new challenge is trying to get all of our games scheduled. Adult softball is three seasons and we typically have, a lot of the teams play, so that's why that number is so high, but they, they typically play all three seasons. And then our adult volleyball. The sand volleyball has kind of hurt our indoor volleyball, so we're trying to make some improvements. We've kind of changed the timeframe for our spring volleyball, moved it up so that it'll be on the indoors, we're gonna have it during January and February and first part of March while weather's still bad that they can't go out and do the sand volleyball, hoping to get our, our volleyball, adult volleyball numbers back up. We did have three youth softball tournaments scheduled, however, they did not make, so these are just my youth baseball tournaments and one tournament was completely canceled because of weather, but that is, 223 teams, teams came in town last year for our youth softball and youth baseball tournaments. I was gonna go back. I was gonna go back and pay back to the city is $15,186. It's in the second right here. So, that's what we've paid back regarding all the equipment that we own, all the equipment that we have there, received from the city when SASSA began. Any questions?
Okay, counselors?
I think last year, Carolyn and I asked a lot about women, girls' participation, boys' participation. I'm presuming that softball, the little bitty tiny bar is girls.
Yes. It's still, the youth softball is still down. And we did a Survey Monkey and sent it out to see what the comparison or what the response was and things that we could do to increase that number. We have been approached by Tri-County to join them, which they would be, travel just a few, like Perkins, Morrison, Pawnee, Perry, Cushing Chandler. So, they could possibly travel out, but we'd also have as, we would split the time, so they would play in Stillwater equal amount of times as they would play away, trying to get some more interest back into it. But, a lot of it is the soccer and the dance, all the responses from our Survey Monkey. I'd be glad to, for the Survey Monkey results, back to the board if you'd like to see those.
That would be interesting.
Yeah. That is our lowest, and we have tried, and we're, we're still trying.
Mm-hmm, yeah. I also had asked about scholarships.
Yes.
And I know that you do have scholarships.
We do have scholarships in my, I had 18 slides, and Mr. McClinney told me I need to cut mine down, so I had to revamp. Yeah. This was my third, my third presentation for him. But, yes, no, last year, we had a total of 78 that we had a sponsor, either a partial or a full sponsor for participants. It's 50% if you're on the projects for the youth, for the free and reduced through the school district. We honor what the city used to do, but yeah.
So, you helped, or scholarships?
Yes, 78 different ones.
And did I hear, I think I heard you say that we had 223 teams, tournament teams in town.
Yes, that's correct.
Economic development.
Correct.
Thank you.
Correct.
Any other questions? I do have to thank counsel.
Where does T-ball fit into?
T-ball is part of our youth baseball, and we have three four-year-old T-ball, and we have five and six-year-old T-ball. And the three and four is absolutely priceless.
And that's all?
That is, that's kind of mixed. No, it's, it's girls and boys. Mm-hmm. When they turn seven and eight, they're either in coach pitch or over in youth softball. We did use the Babcock for youth softball for the junior high several times because they had a conflict with the junior, or with a high school softball field. So, the junior high played at Babcock, and it was a great exchange for us. And I have to thank Coach Counsel because he, he was one of my coaches for a while. I thanked you.
Oh, for T-ball? Sorry.
He was thinking about the season.
He's thinking about.
I was thinking about a question I was gonna ask, but I'm not gonna ask you. I'm actually gonna ask the mayor when you're done.
Okay. That's no worries.
He's so mad. He must have lost.
No, no, we did okay.
You did great. You did great.
Had a lot of, spent a lot of time at Strickland on T-ball and baseball games, so it's, the improvements have been nice.
Thank you.
Very nice.
You had your watch party.
I did. I, in fact, had my.
That's how dedicated it is.
My council election party, because it was right after a baseball game.
Considering that Counsel Joyce was a coach, what kind of training do coaches have?
It is a volunteer. It is a volunteer. And we do, Academy has been very nice. They have given us coaching kits. And so, for youth softball, youth baseball, and youth basketball. And we have coaches, we have a coaches meeting, but kind of going over the rules and everything. But, as far as training, there's no training that's offered.
Okay.
Life training.
It's a good, I mean, I think our community has a better track record than some you hear about in terms of coaches and parents. And my experiences out there have always been good in terms of.
Thank you.
Dealing with people who sometimes, you know, get a little too excited about their baseball team or softball team. So, but, it's a good question for us to think about as we, you know, as those youth sports get bigger, you know, those coaches spend a lot of time with kids, and there's a lot of investment made in it, and so.
We do background checks on any, on all coaches.
Okay. I was also wondering, do all the teams wear the same outfits? If you get a tee shirt or something?
We do provide tee shirts for T-ball and for our youth basketball programs, but the, as they get older, they like to kind of look different. And so, they are different uniforms that the, the teams are able to choose.
And do the individual players' parents provide those uniforms?
We do. They, they do. We do request that the coaches keep it down. We also offer several scholarships. There's businesses in town that have donated funds for, for players that can't afford for a team jersey.
Okay.
We do. One of my fun pictures that I had that John made me kick out was reminders from my child. I'm a kid. It's just a game. My coach is a volunteer. The officials are humans. No college scholarships will be handed out today. And so, I think that's.
Everybody.
I think that's a good summary for our, our youth sports. Any other questions? Oh, I'm getting red.
I could have a dead, I'll grow on the, all we care about's the snack.
My grandkids are into that. How was your game? Oh, we had juice boxes.
And carrots.
Yeah.
But, thank you for the opportunity. I, I enjoyed my time with SASSA. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doing a good job.
Thank you.
Those three.
I did have a general question just about both of these that I can ask you guys, because this is my first time through these presentations. I assume both of these groups and all the other groups have detailed budgets that they have approved by their boards. And do we ever, do we see those? Are those available publicly?
Managers see them, and they are public records.
Okay, great. Just wanted to know. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Carolyn. Okay, item C, presentation of the new city Stillwater Utility Bill.
And our new bill will be presented by Melissa Reams, our CFO.
Hi, Melissa.
Evening, Mayor and counselors. I'm really excited to introduce you to the redesigned utility customer billing format. And we have a video, just a short video, that kind of highlights the, the new information that our utility customers can expect on their bill. Did you do that, Dan?
No. I can dance to it, but I can't.
That's, that's a product of our great Public Relations Department, and, and we so appreciate them. But, if you, as you gathered from the video, we're trying to give customers more information so that they, so that the bill is a little more transparent, if you will, and easier to understand. That new bill format will roll out with the first billing cycle that starts on November the 16th. So, getting ready in a couple of weeks just to start that. In addition to that, we are implementing or, or transitioning to a new payment system. The first steps in that new payment system are going to be a self-service portal. It's a web portal. People can go out and initiate lots of different services through that web portal, trying to help cut down on the visits to City Hall if they're not necessary. The other thing that we're gonna have is an interactive voice response system. I think we've all dealt with different vendors where you can call in and you can hear the balance on your bill. You can make a payment. That's what we're going to have provided. And that should be effective in December of this year. After the first of next year, we're looking forward to pay by text, a mobile phone app, and pay by email. So, really trying to address those needs and wants of our utility customers to pay electronically. So, new utility bill, something to look forward to. Any questions?
Yeah. So, I get my, my mail or email? Not mail, email. Will I get to see this? Like, will, because right now, mine doesn't look like this.
No. And, and that is one thing that we are working on with the statement provider, is the ability for you to see your bill as a PDF.
Okay.
And we want you to be able to see that before you push pay on your email.
Okay.
Too bad, though, because when you open an envelope and unfold the bill, that music is gonna come.
Well, we might could do music. You never know.
You could do music easier on.
And we recently migrated to a new payment system, correct?
We are, we are in the process, yes. By the end of the month, we should be live with that.
Actually, it, I just recently paid my.
Well.
Utility bill online, didn't it?
We did, we did have a pay online feature. This is just gonna be with a new provider, and we're gonna have the interactive voice response system.
Well, I was redirected to.
Were you?
A new, I hope my bill got paid.
We might want to check on that. Maybe you paid Stillwater, Minnesota and Stillwater, Oklahoma.
Someone's like, yay.
Well, I think this new bill format is fantastic.
Oh, good.
The chart and graph, the, the graphing of prior usage, and then just, this is so much more clear in terms of what was used and, you know, we, those two-letter codes on the old bill that you'd have to flip over and try to figure out what, what I was paying for. So, this is great, I think, transparency and just helping people understand where their energy bills are going is good.
I really like the special, special message on the front, too, rather than having to do inserts.
I will, I will pass those comments on to Dana Maddox, our Customer Service Director. She's spent a lot of time working with the vendor and trying to make sure that everything appeared as it was supposed to, so.
It's much more user-friendly.
Yes.
Very, very nice. Thank you.
That was our goal. Thank you so much.
Hey, that takes us to resolutions. Item A, Resolution Number CC-2016-30, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, a municipal corporation, to sign and issue an election proclamation calling for a general election and a runoff election if needed in the City of Stillwater. Mr. Dorman.
This is our annual election resolution. It's coming a little early this year because of two things. One, the change in the charter, which changes our order of election. We now have a general election and a, if needed, runoff in place of the primary and the old general election. And then, Part B is in, we are in the odd-year cycle of the election calendar. There are three cycles. There's a presidential cycle, a gubernatorial cycle, and then what they call the odd-year cycle. There are only four available election dates, and this resolution would allow you to occupy two of them. The way that the proclamation is set out, this would be for the candidate elections, and seats three and four are open for election. Seat three would be for a three-year term. Seat four would be for the first four-year term. And the filing for those seats will be, will be December 5th, I believe, is the first date, and it ends on, at 5:00 on December 7th. Otherwise, it's the same resolution and proclamation that you've seen in the past.
So, seats three and four, but ones for a three-year term and ones for a four-year term?
Yes, ma'am.
Just because of this year?
Because this is the first year to implement the new sequencing under the charter. And one seat has to be for a little bit shorter term to get everyone in sync. After that, all of the seats will be for four-year terms, including seat three, which will start a four-year term in, I believe it's 2020. Isn't that correct, Vice Mayor? Kind of remember how we worked it, but it takes three years to get completed with the cycle.
Okay. Counselors? Questions? Discussion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 2016-30. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of four to zero. That takes us to ordinances. First reading, Mr. Dorman.
Ordnance Number 3352, an ordinance amending Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 29, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Article 1 in general, by repealing in its entirety Section 2918, persons under the influence of alcohol or other intoxicating substances or combination thereof, Section 2919, alcohol, chemical analysis, imperatibility, penalty in Section 2920, driving under the influence while underage and declaring an emergency. And just for the record, we're not making any of this legal now. This is the result of a state preemption that went into effect on November 1st, effective November 1st. No municipal court will have, not a record will not, will have jurisdiction over these types of offenses. Everything is now filed in the District Attorney's Office at the first defense level, unless you live in Oklahoma City or Tulsa, in which case, those municipal courts would still handle DUI cases. But otherwise, all municipal courts not of record do not have jurisdiction over these cases. So, you get a DUI now, the predicate will attach on the very first offense.
Okay. Discussions? Motion to approve?
Move to second reading? Ordnance Number 3352.
Yes, approve for second reading.
Yes, sorry.
We have a motion to approve for second reading.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second on ordinance Number 3352. Please vote. And ordinance 3352 is approved for second reading with a vote of four to zero. That takes them, us to item B, Ordinance Number 3354. Mr. Dorman.
An ordinance amending Stillwater City Code by amending Chapter 18, Environment, Article 2, litter to amend Section 1818 definitions and to repeal in its entirety, Sections 1827 through 1831 regarding handbills and declaring an emergency. This one is basic, this is housekeeping. There have been a number of cases recently in the federal courts that have struck down city ordinances that deal specifically with handbilling as a means of communication. And so, to get out ahead of this and not to infringe upon anyone's First Amendment rights, we're recommending that we go ahead and strike these from the books. We do have litter and vandalism ordinances on the books right now that are sufficient to address this. And we will probably come back to you within the next 60 days with some additional revisions that will not be specific as to handbilling, but will deal with the problems that handbills create, that being litter and sometimes damage to vehicles.
Okay, counselors?
Motion to move that to a second reading?
Mm-hmm. We have a motion and a second to move ordinance Number 335, 3354 to second reading. Please vote. And ordinance Number 3354 is approved for second reading with a vote of four to zero. On second reading, item A, Ordinance Number 3353. Mr. Dorman.
An ordinance closing of forces of the Platted Alleyway between Stanley Street and Blakely Street, between Fourth Avenue and Sixth Avenue adjacent to properties addressed as 409 to 513 South Stanley Street, 1316 West Sixth Avenue, 410 to 524 South Blakely Street, and 1303 to 1305 West Fourth Avenue.
Discussion.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance Number 3353. Please vote.
Wait, is it me?
It would be you.
My bad.
And ordinance Number 3353 is approved with a vote of, or is adopted with a vote of four to zero. That takes us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman.
Requesting executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection 307B1 of the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communication regarding the employment of motion, motion discipling or resignation of City, Stillwater City Manager Norman McNichol. Secondly, I would request an executive session pursuant to 25OS subsection C10 for the purpose of confirming on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to locate within the City of Stillwater because public disclosure of the matter to be discussed would interfere with the development of products and services and would violate the confidentiality of the business.
Okay. Mr. McNichol.
Thank you, Mayor. Remind the public that some 200 new laws went into effect November 1st from last legislative session. One we really want you to know about is. One we really want you to know about is to remind you that the state began enforcing a law this month requiring motors to slow down or safely change lanes around garbage trucks. Slow down to get around is an effort to increase safety and prevent potential injuries for our trash and recycling collectors in our communities. Remember to exercise caution and decrease your speed whenever you see a garbage truck on your route. These are important folks, they get rid of the stuff you don't wanna deal with.
It can be very dangerous.
We want them to be, it is a dangerous job. We want them to be safe while they are going about their duties.
Very good. Counselors, anything we'd like to discuss, or do you have any news?
I have some news. I'm in shock that it's actually November, and really surprised that holidays are starting. Downtown Stillwater's Holiday Open House is coming up, Sunday, November 20th, and Monday, November 21st. Not very long off. Enjoy great sales, food samples, crafts, door prizes, gift wrapping, and more at unique boutiques and specialty shops along Main Street. And this is the best news, you could have your picture taken with a real reindeer and enjoy free, free carriage rides through downtown. So, November 20th, Monday, November 21st, downtown. Everybody better be there.
And ready to take a picture with a reindeer, because I know it took a while to get that all in place, so we thank the powers...
A real reindeer, not just a reindeer dressed up, right?
And reindeers are real.
They're real.
They're real.
They're, they're real, yeah. And you might shop while you're down there, too.
Absolutely.
Shop.
Shop local.
Shop.
Shop local. And I'm gonna segue into that by saying this year's annual breakfast with Santa will take place Saturday, December 3rd, from 9:00 to 11:00, at this community center at 315 West 8th Street. Kids can visit with Santa, enjoy a cinnamon roll, and get into the holiday spirit. Tickets are $3 per person, and an adult must accompany the child. Tickets may be purchased at the City of Stillwater Parks and Recreation Armory or the community center. Saturday, December 3rd, breakfast with Santa.
On Tuesday, November 1st, a ribbon-cutting ceremony was held to celebrate the opening of the new Western Road alignment with Hall of Fame Ave. Attendees included the Honorable Mayor Gina Noble, Governor Mary Fallon, OSU President Hargis, and officials from the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma Department of Transportation, Payne County, and Oklahoma State University. Some of the new features included addition of lanes, crosswalks, and traffic signals. Phase two is anticipated to begin January of 2017.
Right around the corner, right after breakfast with Santa.
From McElroy to Blakely, was that phase two?
Yep.
Mayor, if I may...
Absolutely.
Back up if everyone else is...
Yes.
Will stills got him.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
No, please.
I'm happy to talk about the website if you'd like me to.
Please do.
Okay. The City of Stillwater recently unveiled a new redesigned website at Stillwater.org. Key features of the updated site include user-friendly desktop and mobile versions, the mobile version is really great, a sophisticated built-in search engine, a WhoTo contact page with answers and contact information for some of your most common questions, and detailed infrastructure and development project pages. Take a look at the new website, there is an anonymous survey under the news section at Stillwater.org where you can let us know what you think about the new website, but please check it out, it's, it's, really looks great, some great pictures on there, and much easier to navigate as well.
Much, much user-friendly, yes. It's very nice. Okay, Mr. McNichol.
I hope I'm boring everybody with this, I just want to remind folks that as of the 19th of Nov, or excuse me, the 14th of November, work will begin in earnest in the roadway at Sixth and Perkins. So, please, drive safely when you go by there, and there was some work being done today, there were some restricted lanes and work being done in the area, so...
Find your path around now, so you practice.
Exactly.
And it won't come as such a shock.
Exactly.
Just find your path around. Anything else?
Tomorrow's Election Day, should go vote.
If you haven't already.
If you forgot.
Why are you worried that? You should go vote.
You should go vote. None of us are up for election now, so.
We can say that.
It's your privilege and your civic responsibility, and everybody should vote. Who's eligible and registered and of age and don't want any... Okay. At this time, I'm going to recess this meeting and go to our SUA meeting, then we'll come back to, and our CETA meeting, then we'll come back to the city council for the executive sessions. So, Stillwater Utilities Authority, I'm gonna call that meeting to order. And trustees, does anyone wish to remove an item from the consent docket?
Motion to approve, I'm sorry.
No, I don't wish to remove it, but I did think that was a lot of reading in that audit report. To read the audit report, it was just a lot of reading, a lot of little tiny print.
Motion to approve, unless you have questions.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, please vote. And the consent docket is approved with a vote of four to zero. Takes us to number five miscellaneous items from Mr. Dorman, General Counsel.
Nothing to report, ma'am.
General Manager, Mr. McNichol.
No items, ma'am.
Trustees?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting, please vote. And the meeting, counselor in here?
Oh, sorry.
And the meeting is adjourned with a vote of four to zero. That takes us to Stillwater Economic Development Authority, I'm gonna call that meeting to order. Trustees, consent docket, does anyone wish to remove an item or discuss?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket, please vote. And the consent docket is approved with a vote of four to zero, that takes us to General Orders, Mr. McNichol.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the 19th of September, the trustees approved a chamber contract for next, this and next fiscal, the coming fiscal year, current fiscal year, I'll get this right in a minute. And during that meeting, it was requested that there be some measurements or metrics, as they have become to be known, for what the funds that taxpayers are investing in that process are used for. Those measures have been circulated, and we would, staff recommends approval of those measures. We worked with Chamber, both the exec and President Gary Clark, and came up with this, and I want to thank John Dorman for his assistance in some, doing some exciting deciphering on an aircraft on the way to a city municipal attorney's meeting. He was very helpful in that regard, so.
Okay. Any discussion?
I like it, I like the wages, you know, it's something we've all talked about a lot, so I like that that's included in the metrics.
I will say that Vice Mayor Darlington made a suggestion that we know why or why not a business might not locate here, might or might not locate here, does or does not, and they are more than happy to provide that information, so I did...
That would be really helpful to us, also.
I did mention that to both Mr. Allison and Mr. Clark.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, trustees?
I think it was good, I'm interested to see this information, once we have numbers from elsewhere.
Yes.
They are preparing to do what would now be in arrears, the first quarter report, soon.
Soon.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Motion to approve Stillwater Chamber of Commerce Economic Development metrics.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the metrics for the Chamber of Commerce contract. And that is approved with a vote of four to zero, and there were, there were many, many good metrics in there, so, and I know that's not an easy task, so thank you very much. And I think it definitely improved the contract and made it more user-friendly as well, because we can, we can see what's going on better. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the Stillwater Economic Development Authority, please vote. And that is, we are adjourned with a vote of four to zero. Now, I will reconvene the city council meeting, do we have a motion and a second to move the city council to executive session?
I moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move to executive session, please vote. And with a vote of four to zero, we are moving to...